Okay. Do we have any additions or omissions to the city session? Okay, seeing none. Let's start with number three, request to appear, and that will be Up North Jobs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please state your name.
Thank you. I'm General Tyler. I serve as chairman and executive director of Up North Jobs. I've included a curricular mandate and immediate act that is provided. Obviously, our organization has been invited to present our organization to the city council tonight. And I ask myself a series of questions, and I'm going to provide the answers. And I think when we're through with this presentation, I'll let you offer any questions that you may have. First of all, what are we? We're a 501(c)(3) corporation, nonprofit. Our certificate of incorporation was issued by the Minnesota Secretary of State. I've included that in the immediate act. Where's our office? The office is currently occupied by the Ely Area EDA and the Vermillion Community College and the France Bank and Trust Company located on Sheridan Street in the first half of the east. When did we begin our operation? Well, I began drafting the necessary documents for fighting with the Secretary of State in April or May of this year. And this has been some time in the making. I have been following, as many of you have, what is going on in the city and with the opponents of mining. And I believe that it became obvious to me some time ago that only one voice is being heard regarding all these issues being raised by the opponents of mining. Our certificate of incorporation is dated, as you can see, June 12, 2013. I suppose that's the date we began operations. Who are we? I along with one-time residents Jay Mackey, Michael Forsenman, and Ed Zoop in Babbitt manage the activities of the corporation through the board of directors. Far away, town supervisor Mary Poynt serves as our corporate secretary. We have about a half dozen volunteers who staff our office. And we intend to expand the board to include members representing the logging industry, oil manufacturing, construction, and tourism. Why did we decide to organize a nonprofit corporation? Sustainable Ely should not be the only voice heard regarding the development of new mines in northeast Minnesota. Our members, including our board, do not believe tourism alone can sustain the Ely area economy. It is obvious that more is needed. I'm going to present some data shortly. Our mission, that is our business purpose, as stated in our articles of incorporation, are as follows, or is as follows. One, to support and conduct nonpartisan research, education, and informational activities to increase public awareness of the importance of job creation in northeast Minnesota. Two, to support job growth in northeast Minnesota by promoting mining, manufacturing, logging, construction, retailing, and service industries. And I would say, any legal enterprise that will employ a person, especially a family, that can live on the income that a job is created. Three, to create a favorable business environment by promoting the implementation of sensible tax policies. And four, to prevent the deterioration of our community and schools which result from the outmigration of northeast Minnesotans due to economic conditions. Our goal is to enroll 3,000 members by this time next year. Next time, by this time next year, it is likely that the Polymet EIS will have received permitting and some things are going to happen, I think, about that time that numbers are going to like. If the Polymet and Twin Metals mines are not developed, can tourism alone sustain Ely's economy? Well, as we all know, Ely's economy was founded on logging and mining industry. The logging industry in northern Minnesota has been devastating after the North American Free Trade Agreement. The Ingallsworth Mills in Cook, Grand Rapids, and Flumity have closed, Azza Mills in Under Bay, Zor-Town in Duluth. Canadian wood comes into the U.S. by rail, logging on downland. Our Minnesota loggers cannot compete with higher-priced woods found in Minnesota forests. Those facts were documented by the Congressmen. Ely Area Tourism has been set to be the third elect of Ely Area Economy. The data displayed on the board is based upon U.S. census surveys and is provided by the U.S. Census American Committee. You have that particular data set in your packet. I'll point out that the median household income in Ely, based upon 2006-2010 data, was 31,900 dollars. In Babbitt, same years, the same data indicates that the median household income, fat income, that is, was 37,500 dollars. Skipping down to Aurora, the median family income was 45,300 dollars. And in White Lake, the median family income was 45,400 dollars. In April 1967, the Pioneer Mine employed some 475 men and three shifts ceased operations. Pioneer Mine was owned by US Steel and began operations in 1888. Not only did the families of the miners employ the miners for tape chat, the closing of the Pioneer Mines eliminated about 60% of the taxes received by local city government and school systems, which was provided by the iron ore valuations. This comes from the Yamasabi Daily Report, 1967, issued by John Sumner. I'm sure someone will know the name. In that same year, 1967, there were 1,775 students enrolled in Ely schools. Following the closure of the Pioneer Mine, enrollment began to drag, to drop, I'm sorry. Enrollment during the last school year, 2012-2013, was about 550 students, K to 12. That data was provided by the Currys Fielder Superintendent's Room, who was here. What does this data tell us? It tells us that the Ely Area Economy cannot be sustained by tourism and the logging industry with so little manufacturing and destruction activity contributing to the area economy. In closing, let me say this. This means worse, said Don Shelby when he spoke in Ely recently. Mr. Shelby was with WCCO in Minneapolis for a number of years and is running for Congress. He's yet another opponent of mining, who lives hundreds of miles to the south, who believes he knows what is best for Ely and northeast Minnesota. Let us rightly conscious that the well-financed opposition will oppose any new mining operations in northeast Minnesota. Yet, we are not despite alone. Up North Jobs is a member of a coalition with the name Jobs for Minnesota. Quote, "The coalition is an organization brought together and committed to advancing one common goal: job creation in Minnesota." The organization was co-founded by the Minnesota Building and Construction Police Council and the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce. Jobs for Minnesotans consists of organizations that represent real, everyday Minnesotans, businesses, middle-class workers, labor, and local governments, among others." That's from Minnesota Jobs homepage. The list of members of the coalition is lengthy and includes, among others, the City of Ely, Babbitt, Beatty, Chisom, Hibbing, White Lake, and Cliff's Natural Resources, Duluth Metals, Grand Rapids, Hibbing Chambers and Commerce, and many individual members. We are urging our members, and we're almost 260 strong today, we're growing at over 50 a week. We urge our members to become a member of Jobs for Minnesotans. Once more, we have an opportunity to see the positive effects that mining can bring to our schools and communities with Polymet and Twin Metals proposing multimillion-dollar mining operations in northern Minnesota. When the Marines who served in the Pacific Theater returned from China after World War II, they brought with them a Chinese expression, "Zhang'e." It means literally, "Work together to achieve your objective." If we all work together and support and promote all the industries, mining, logging, tourism, construction, manufacturing activities, any legal enterprise that will create a job, we will defeat those who oppose Polymet and Twin Metals world mining operations. And one last thought. We will defeat our opponents because they are on the wrong side of this fight. Because when you deny a person the opportunity to hold a job that will support a family, this family, you strip that person of the dignity and self-esteem. And that is why we are going to oppose those who oppose clean water and inviting. Thank you.
James, as long as you're up there, Mr. Tyler, does anyone have any questions on the council?
Well, not really a question, but the reason why I asked Mr. Tyler to come forward and I asked that the surrounding township's cities people would be interested in joining us. The only way that the City of Ely, or a township, whatever, can go out and actively support financially an organization like this is through a joint powers agreement. And I feel that this is really appropriate. We're going to have to discuss what your budget may be, what your needs are going to be. But I think it is really high time that all of you that are sitting out there, be it governmental group, school, hospital, and organization that would be interested in joining, I think we should kind of pop in the joint powers ambulance setup. And I'd just like to see everybody getting together and getting behind this. And that's the only way we, as a government, can truly go out and support you monetarily.
Well, I know there are a number of representatives here from Moorestown, Shipp, and Galway. Would you like them to express their thoughts?
That would be great. And if they have, you know, there's going to be plenty of discussion on this coming down, like, like I said, dollar and cents, how we're going to do with all the joint powers that work. And if there are individuals that somebody would like to see on that joint powers board, I think that's up to each and every entity. But somehow, we got to get this thing started, and I think it's a heck of a lot better sooner than later.
Well, the mayor of Babbitt is here. Would you like to say your word?
Many of you can help me, I'm very sorry. I worked at Liza Mining in Marinshire. Went through the health study they just did. I have no adverse health effects on my lungs. The water up here is some of the freshest and nicest. I think the mines have come a long way in taking care of the environment. And there's getting to be a number of organizations who got this Up North Jobs, jobs in Minnesota, and the mines are helping to support those, I don't know, monetarily, but figuratively. But I think we'll need to get behind this. And it isn't so much the jobs. The country needs this kind of improvement to help our economy and to help them. Not just the range, but the country as a whole. We can't be held captive, excuse me, by third-world countries that are warring among themselves where we can't get these things that go into our computers and our cellphones and our medical equipment. We need these precious metals. It's not just the copper they're going to roll, it's all the other precious metals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask Superintendent Drexley, if I could, to say her name.
Mr. Mayor, council members. The only thing I can say is that in order to sustain a school as an independent entity, we do need to have jobs up here that entice families to come. We recently received a million-dollar Taconite bond money for infrastructure that won't even begin to cover the infrastructure needs we have. Our taxpayers in this town support the majority of our schools because we don't get equalizer money. We get very little Taconite money, and the burden is on our taxpayers. So I have to say thank you to the taxpayers for wanting to remain independent. But in order to sustain our school, we really need to create jobs that entice new families to come. Thank you.
I don't know if I'm really going to go ahead here, but I've endured all my life, 48 years. A little liar, but done. I worked in mining for thirty-some years. My dad worked 40, and I'm at 40. But anyway, Towne Morris and the school district are still in joint powers. And we do, at the last big meeting we had, actually, within December of 2011, where we had all our politicians up, and they said it was the best meeting we ever had. And in the last two years, in 2012, we met with Mr. Paul, Mr. Dale, and Mr. Ripley. We had a bunch of politicians at the Capitol, went over a lot of things, and a lot of good to a lot of it. And we went again this year, and we took a few years or whatever to promote 169 in the land of Duluth. 169. We're still in, still in joint powers, but whatever happens here, you know, I mean, we never gave up on joint powers because on the line, we figured, per job, whatever it is, all things happen, happened here. We stuck up, and we're still going to keep going at it with the school district. School's the other voting member, and we have, I think, we leave the chamber and the hospital is still in.
Thank you, Ms. Marine. Mike, Mr. Michael Forsenman, Breed Michael Forsenman's here. Would you like to say your word?
Sixty-six years I've lived in this community, and it's been the best community that you could ever live in. I think everybody here, that's one of the reasons we're here. Most of the dollars that have come into our household, whether it be my dad's household, whether it be my household, or into my home, have been mining money. Granted, the taxpayers have been very generous to me, and for the last nineteen years have actually have been very generous. In fact, I have got a few dollars as accounting commissioner, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. But, well, one of the things that goes through my mind, just the other day, our coffee pledge was going through some of the old Sled Dog booklets that they had. And in those booklets, a 1971 booklet, when we went through them, without exaggeration, over two-thirds of those ads that were in there, those businesses do not exist anymore. I do have the thing at home, I would have brought it here. But literally, two-thirds of those businesses do not exist anymore. They have been replaced by a few new businesses. And, but at the same time, there's, there has been just an exodus from our community. I think that for some of us older members here in this audience, we remember when you could take and, you could get out of high school, not that we all did this, but we could get out of high school or we could literally take a drive up to Reserve Mining Company and the next day be working. Working at a job that, for many, they worked for 30 years until they were retired. I did that. I literally left on December 29th. I was good, January 29th, cold day, drove up there, stand landed, took my application, went down to see the doctor, the next day I started. On January 30th, it was about 30, oh, it might be exaggerated, but it was cold. And what, what I was going to say about this, I spent 34 years as a steelworker, 17 years and two months at Reserve Mining Company with a two-year carryover, and 16 years and 10 months at Arcer Metal over the old inland steel. When I started at the mine in 1967, it was a totally different culture than it is today. The safety was not there. I remember going in and cleaning out the dust collectors and stuff, and literally, was never even offered a face mask there and stuff. I mean, I could have got one if I asked for one, but I mean, it wasn't really offered. Now, you can't go into a dusty situation without being protected, having all the personal protection gear. Things have changed tremendously. They've not only changed tremendously in the way that the employees are treated and the safety features, but, and I spent some time, and this is kind of important to know. When we worked at Reserve, you took the ore out of the ground, you crushed it up, and you sent it to Silver Bay, and you got rid of about three-quarters of it and dumped it into the lake. Totally something you would never, ever think was, doesn't happen. But when Arcer Metal opened their new pit, just to show the example, because these are from personal experiences. They had a charrette. They literally took in engineers and architects from around the world. Not just Minnesota, not just in the United States, but literally from overseas in Europe to take and do a charrette that, they spent a few weeks in literally looking at, when we take the ore out here and we dig this up here, where does that topsoil go? Where does the, where does the crush rock go? Where does the waste rock go? And when they got done, they actually had in the plans where the cabins would go on the lakes that would be produced by the pits. For those that aren't aware, if you go to, you know, if everyone in the district probably is, but if you look at Miners Lake, that's an old pit, an old pit, plus the sinking of the shafts besides. But it's one of the prettier spots in our community. It wasn't pretty when I grew up in 232 East Chandler, but it's pretty now. And Shaguale Lake, when I was a kid, you didn't dare go down there on the dog days of summer because it was so green, you wouldn't even go into it. But things have changed. Things, the environment has changed. Our MTCA has some of the toughest rules in the United States and probably the world. We can mine today better than we ever could have mined even five years ago. And we can do it safely, we can protect the water systems, and monitor those water systems. As, you know, for those that haven't done it, when I look at those that have put out some of the rhetoric, and I read it because I have to. I read it, some of the rhetoric, and I, some of the things are compared to Sudsbury. Sudsbury, Canada, was a disaster when they smelted that copper. There is no plan, at least at Twin Metals, if you talk to them, there's no plan they have smelting up here. The auto claims that Polymet are planning, they're looking at reverse osmosis. So in other words, that water gets reused, it doesn't take, it isn't, it's a captured system. Those things don't happen. The fact that we have 3% sulfites in our ore here, Sudsbury, because it's a meteor event created that copper deposit up there, is 33%. We're talking 10 times the sulfites up here. But yet, those things are brought up by the anti-mining people. When I graduated, I'm going to stop with just the fact that when I looked at, when I graduated, there was 150 some of us up on the stage there. Or, you're a year before as a kid, or we did. And the, and now, when I go to a graduation, you know, it's small in comparison to what we had. Our schools bustle. Main Street, you couldn't walk down Main Street without bumping into people when you were kids. Verkeen's Corner was full of kids, full of kids, full of adults walking around. Tell me, it's August right now. I've been watching all summer. There have been days this summer when I can bowl down these streets and not hit anybody. Things have changed, and things have not changed for the better when it comes to the economy of our community. I made a commitment that I'm going to live and die in this community. For Dennis Knowles, I put an addition on to my garage because I had to make a choice. I've got a place on Johnson Lake, I could have put the addition up there. It would have been cheaper tax-wise. I need to skip that, so. And I could have done. But decided to stay, yes, decided to stay in my community and perform my hobby in my community that I grew up in, that I do plan to die in, and I, and I think that, I'll stop with the last statement, where I came in. This is the best community you could live in. It's a beautiful community, but we truly need jobs to keep our kids and our grandkids in this community. Is that all?
Mr. Tyler? Oh, Mr. Tyler? Yeah, let's just have, we'll have the hospital, but then let's just limit it to other government officials who want to speak, go, take it from there. I want to get into everybody.
Appreciate the chance to speak. John Fossil, I'm the administrator of the hospital on the residence of Ely. Naturally, I carry a bias toward healthcare. And to say that healthcare is stressed right now would be an understatement as you look at both the good and the bad outcomes that are predicted from the radical changes in our care by the Accountable Care Act. We're stressed. Recently, the Inspector General's Office suggested that we had need so many critical access hospitals, of which we're on, and it has kept us funded. And blue cross and blue shield, I'm not entirely certain that we are going to be able to be a provider in their network under the next contract based upon their belief that accountable care requires 15 to 20% reductions in hospital payments. So that we are stressed. And throughout the discussion about what is sustainable, I have great concerns. I do see a lot of our tourism-related industries close in the winter. I'm wondering how many people in the community would accept a similar plan from the hospital as a tourist hospital. We could shut the doors in September and see you again in May. Wouldn't do much for the community. We have payroll of five to six million. Might be the largest payroll right now in the community. It's at risk. The hospital was founded in the 50s. When I look back at the incorporated documents and I see how the hospital was built, it was built with representatives of mine on the initial board and the unit steward, collecting a hundred bucks from members. A lot of the city's infrastructure, which Harold is trying to fix today, was built in the 50s and beyond with dollars that, in essence, were generated by mining-related activities, collected in taxes, property, and otherwise from people who lived here and service generation, and put together for the use and the betterment of the people of Ely. As our population has deteriorated from 6,000-7,000 in the city, in the 60s, to what it is today, and when you take a deeper look at the demographic and you understand that the bulk of the population of Ely is older than 40, and the people moving to Ely are 55 and older, how long will they continue to come to this area and sustain us if there's not basic services and support for infrastructure like city buildings or the hospital? Or we close during the winter months? Or we close during the winter months? So, we need to take a hard look at what is sustainable. I'm all for clean water, we need clean water, and I believe that it's a doable scenario. I do believe that we have learned from past mistakes. But our community's infrastructure, those things that are supported by good jobs, whether it be the cities or the, or the hospital or the school district, need those good jobs, need those young families, need to be regenerated. And if there is a way that, as a community, we can band together to have more influence over the outcome of this decision, if we can show, unlike Mr. Shelby's comments, that we're not going to kill one another in the war, I think we'd have a chance of having a good outcome for our community, for our citizens, for our school, for our hospital, for all that live and want to work here at Great Community. I like the idea of an ambulance-like structure. I would remind the council of this. Having been a member of the, and still paying dues to the old PADA. The old PADA was both a revenue-recollecting funnel conduit and was the operating authority. And so, the new ambulance is not. The ambulance board of directors could make a decision on a majority vote that one or more governmental bodies would object to, and majority rules. It functions. So, I think that one of the things that if the, if we're going to go down the joint powers route, which I think is viable, I would urge you to use the, the joint powers solely as a funding mechanism. And like the ambulance, your only recourse is to, through the joint powers, say you're not paying anymore. That might mean you lose a vote. That might mean you lose a vote, but you can move forward. Having been part of what I thought was a really good idea with the Joint Fire District, we were trying to proceed under that same concept. And one of the things that has kind of struck us down is that we can't, we've been unable to move forward with a majority, majority of, of votes. And so I would, I would urge you to, to look seriously and consider seriously how to make our community grow. And I thank you for your time, and give me a call if you have questions. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I, I didn't want to get into having everyone in the room. I thought we'd do it to the people who might be in joint powers and the government officials that were here. So, we can kind of limit this a little bit. But, um, do you, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I'll answer any questions I think that you may have.
Okay, anyone have any more questions?
I don't, I just have a comment. I, I think as, as Warren brought up, the ambulance and all that has worked, and as, as Mr. Fossum just discussed, you know, that, that scenario, I think, could work well. Actually, in the joint powers, it was the school, hospital, health chips, City of Winton. I believe Blackbabbitt was part of that at one time too, or was part of the EAD at one time, I believe. So I think if we, you know, I think maybe the next step is to determine how we get all the communities engaged to start that process. I, if I remember correctly, I think it took some time to do the ambulance, joint powers in that fashion, but maybe having that as a framework, maybe it would go a little smoother. Maybe that's the next step.
The next step then would be to send a letter to see different organizations and see who might be interested?
See who's interested, and then, Mr. Tyler, as far as their budget and their, you know, what exactly they're looking at for a commitment from the communities, that certainly has to be part of that.
Sure.
Discussion.
I would just like to say something about the ambulance here, Ross, that it started out, Don, at a grant there. And it took us two and a half years before everybody agreed how it was going to do. We had lawyers involved and everything, right, Don? It took two and a half years, it wasn't three, four months. When we did it, we did it right. Somebody making a deal now, the last sixteen months, two new ambulance, four of them drive, two hundred eighty-one dollars, and we added extra EMTs. Only thing I'm worried about is the ambulance. A lot of people say, well, everything's really good. It is, but it's hard to get young people in this area to get on that ambulance, right, Don? That's, that's the only thing I'm worried about. And we have enough people that want to work, because when somebody comes up there and work, they always want the wife to work. There's no jobs, and that's the only way we gotta be. Turn around, that's because people are leaving, they're EMTs. We get, you know, you have to be staff. That's the only thing I'm afraid of.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Kelly, hang on a minute. Kelly, did you want to jump in on that?
I just wanted to let you know that the, the invites, I sent out all the invites. The City of Winton is purposeful here today, we can't be cranky as well. I thought it might be helpful to the lawyers.
They, they were a member of the coalition, was that, or the joint powers? Yeah, yeah. As I said, anybody from local government who'd like to say something.
Kathy Brandow, Mayor of the City of Winton. Thank you for the invite, Kelly. I just want to say, I think residents of Winton would love to see additional jobs into this community. We are now struggling with a big issue in our town, and it could be the possible closing of our liquor store. One of the reasons is no customers, no sales. It all has to do with not enough people coming in this community. So, I'm going to speak for myself, I'm all for this, I will present it to our council, but I think we'll have a bad thing from the city again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on Harold's comments. Would you schedule another study session, and you'll present a budget, and some of the other material that you'd like, as soon as possible?
I think that might be appropriate. Again, it's getting a commitment from the other communities that are interested. We're obviously Winton, Talon Morris, City of Abbott, Stony River is also here.
Well, I, I think, as soon as you can get us the materials, why don't you send us the materials and those?
When is the next study session going?
The next study session will be the last Tuesday in September.
And you have a special study session?
We have a study session each month, so we can put that on the agenda, and...
If, if you send us the materials, we can also look at things in a, in a regular council meeting too. So, but it's a matter, I think, getting the materials to us. Well, I can, I don't know, I prefer not to, and get stuff, especially if it has budgets and numbers on it at the meeting, and then have, try to make a decision ahead of that time.
Well, I can have, I can prepare and have it due by Friday. And I regret to think that it would be a month before we could present it.
First and third Tuesdays are the regular scheduled council meetings.
Could we present it at a council meeting?
Oh, okay. Sure.
And the first, what is the date, Kelly?
Next Tuesday is the first council meeting, I believe that's the second. Third, the first.
The next council meeting is what?
Next Tuesday's the third.
Week of the day. Can I go on the agenda?
Certainly.
All right. Something on the agenda.
Yeah.
Warren, and then Warren Ross.
Actually, you know, our staff, I'm sure the village park, Talon Morris, they're the people that should get all of this information, and then they should get it out to their members. And I know how effectively it works for the city. It shouldn't be an issue to get all the information outwards by the way.
Are you suggesting then we should make the same information available to the juridical government?
Absolutely, it isn't the City of Ely doing this. What we're looking for is a project based joint powers, and that's everybody, it's just not the city.
We will do that.
Kelly?
I think one of the questions in my mind is, we do need a leader to start this process in terms of getting the joint powers formed and having the volume from the other entities. One of my suggestions would be to start forming a joint powers agreement. I think that there is some consensus here tonight with regard to the annual association of electric politics. And perhaps that's a starting point, looking at those documents, so you're asking for participation of members.
We can't hear you.
And you can't hear me. You can't hear me? All right, how about that? Okay. So what I was saying is that I think that there needs to be a leader in this process, and by that I mean the City of Ely to, to formulate the joint powers and help to get the buying of the other communities, and really one document going out with all others reviewing it. So perhaps at our next meeting, that would be something that the City of Ely, that we could run through and then propose to the other entities.
Okay, can you put that together for Kelly?
You're welcome.
Go, go ahead.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. I agree with you on that. And also just really quickly thank the other entities who are here this evening for coming. You know, it's a, in my opinion, a beautiful night out, and thank you for thinking the time to come. I know it's not always easy to come when you're asked to come. So, thank you for all of you who are out there, I can't see all of you. I appreciate you coming and also for speaking. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having us invited to here today.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have any questions about what we're going to be doing?
No.
Okay.
I know Kelly is well enough to try to get the joint powers to close the agreement together.
And thanks. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Tyler? Okay, thank you, Mr. Tyler.
Thank you.
The only thing on joint powers, there's a limit on which you can give it, only year's going to give it. Fifty thousand dollars except for school. The school, they passed a law, eight years ago, I just can't remember how much. That's max, you can get it, right, Kelly, fifty grand?
I think we'll be able to stand to that. Okay, thank you. I see we have a communication here from Betsy Lustig. She asked if you read the council meeting.
Yes.
I'll read it quickly. Honorable Ely City Council, for over two decades, my father would stay with us and I had dedicated our time and efforts to the Ely Area Development Association, helping the city and area secure a stable business climate and attract limited wage job opportunities to our, for our area residents. Jobs that keep our families from leaving our community and raising our own families here and in our schools are the way for most important jobs. Sustainable, responsible jobs in logging and mining are some of the jobs that brought a captain of our families to Ely. I grew up on Moose Lake, working in family health business. Natural resources are a vital part of our economy and have been for generations. Years at the EADA has taught me that a tourism-based economy of old is not supported area, and it too has an environmental impact. It is my belief that in order to keep these jobs that are so critical for our community's future, council needs to take a strong stand, stand in support of the responsible mining timber companies trying to order a community. Up North Jobs provides the community and council a voice and a responsible approach towards jobs in our area. To have a focus on those jobs and a watchful eye on the industry will make a difference when a company decides where to locate or where to avoid. I support the mission of Up North Jobs, and I hope the council can lend any and all support possible towards them so they can fulfill their mission for our community's future. Sincerely, Betsy Lustig. Okay, John?
How much you know of the City of Ely, you have past presidents supporting Lynn Mills, and also past presidents for the way, you know, the mining, you have to be there. Certainly are, we have, we have all that and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else on our jobs?
Will we speak?
Um, I was hoping for a little bit of two government officials, otherwise we're going to have the public on both sides, it's going to be mid-ninety-four.
There will be a huge opportunity, will there be a huge opportunity?
There's always an opportunity to come into the council or as a study section. So, okay, can we move on to, I see no new, old, no old business. And then new business, we have the city personnel judge?